All right. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gutschall. I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening is a business session of the Board of Supervisors. And we have a number of items on the agenda to include under new business, starting under new business, the board will take action to appoint two members to the Arts Council, following which the board will take action to approve and adopt amendments to the Historical Commission bylaws. Following that, the board will take action to approve a sales agreement for the procurement of three Seagraves Marauder Pompers. We have with us a number of guests in the audience from our various volunteer fire companies, so thank you for joining us, gentlemen, ladies. Following that, the board will take action to adopt Resolution 2024-11, which authorizes the submission of a funding request to the CFA relating to a parks improvement project. And then the board will then take action to approve an amendment to the standing Friendship Center lease agreement with the Harrisburg area Young Men's Christian Association. And then finally, the board will take action to approve the improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, hear any final announcements, and then finally make a motion to adjourn. And with all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Unfortunately, someone took the gavel, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Mr. Judd will be leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
No approval of minutes this evening? No approval of minutes? Okay. Before we came out here this evening, we did meet an executive session, and the board will be meeting afterwards an executive session also. Public comment, is there anybody that would like to speak? All I ask is that when you come up, you give your name and your address. If it is something that you want to speak about that's on the agenda, we want you to wait until that agenda item comes up. If it's not, then you can, excuse me, you can come up and speak at the podium. So do I have public comment, anybody? Okay, you may come up to the podium.
Patricia Stahl, 5604 Devon Drive. I want to thank the township for two things that I know you've gotten a lot of criticism about. The first thing I want to thank you for is the wonderful job that was done on my neighborhood and my neighborhood and my streets with the sewer. It's wonderful. And I keep telling everybody else, be patient, it will happen. The second thing I want to thank you for is the wonderful speed bumps that force everybody to do the speed limit. It really helps.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. Normally, everybody's complaining, so we appreciate it. And this is what we tell people with the sewer and its sewer authority, please be patient. So thank you so much for your comments. Yes, sir?
Oh, good, more accolades.
Well, good evening. My name is William Stephen Johnson. I reside at 6705 Conway Road. A few weeks ago, I was here and I spoke. However, I see new faces on the board, and I don't think I provided enough background information for people to fully understand what my issue was, what I was speaking to. And so for that reason, and in addition to something that just occurred yesterday, I felt that I needed to come back and speak. So I put some notes down for myself to follow, so I'm not up here too long. But so certainly, my property borders the compost site off Conway Road. I'm literally a stone's throw away from the compost site, the rear of my property. Over the years, I've reached out to the Environmental Protection Agency as well as the township for noise, dust, hours of operation, et cetera. And despite my valid complaint, the township only expanded the operation and included yard waste from other townships. I don't know if they're still doing that today, but the fact that we have issues, I thought that was important to point out. At one point, to justify, I'm not sure it justified the noise and the dust and the dirt, but it was reported that the compost site existed before I moved in. I've been living there for over 30 years. And when I, before purchasing the property, I went to the old township building, which was down the street, and I spoke to the supervisor at the time. I wanted to find out what they were going to do with that tract of land. And at that time, certainly, he didn't know, but what he did say was, it would never be opened again as a landfill, and at the time, they were kicking around turning it into a golf course. And so, you know, that helped me to make my decision that I wanted to buy this land. But furthermore, it should be noted that the township, that land was originally purchased from Mr. Hodge with the intent to turn it into a community park for the Hodge's Heights residents and surrounding communities, only later to be turned into a landfill, okay? Not even a compost site, a landfill, which there were neighbors that bordered it, and for years, they suffered from stench and rats and dogs and noise and anything you could think of. They just said it was awful. And so, you know, certainly, I wanted to make sure we weren't going back there. But anyway, so today, we don't have the rats or the stench unless there's a fire occasionally. However, the noise and the dust, the unsightly views in the winter continue. And when I say the dust, I wanted to bring a video in. I took a video, when it gets drier, and I got this from last year, trucks go down the back road, the dust kicks up so far, it comes through the trees, all the way across the property. And when my kids were little, they were always told, run home, get out of it, because it just led to allergies and other issues. And still today, occasionally, they don't keep the road wet, and that dust comes through in the cloud, that I was able to pick it up clearly on a video, and I will try to find that and send it to the township. But occasionally, fires have occurred because if they don't turn the mulch piles, don't keep the proper moisture content, fires spontaneously, which firefighters probably know more about than I do, but they do occur, and I've called the fire company occasionally. Haven't seen any lately as far as fires. Prior to opening the site, there was no impact study done by the township or DEP. Years later, when a study was conducted, I pushed for a study through DEP. It showed excessive noise levels in my bedroom. No action was taken to significantly reduce the noise. It was also mentioned by Representative DEP and the company that was conducting the test, that my home sort of sits in a way that the noise sort of is channeled that direction. And just to make matters worse, when they built the community below us, over, I think it was over a year, they trucked in, dumped truckloads of dirt, and built a mountain all the way across those new homes, which again, did nothing more that funnel more noise our way. You know, and the dust that we still get, my window seals outside, they collect dust to furniture, because all that grinding, that dust got to float somewhere. So I'm almost done, but at times, I do work second, third shift, and I require sleep in the morning hours. And sometimes, it's just impossible to keep sleeping. I'll sometimes get up, move to another room in the house if they start early. They've been really good about starting after eight o'clock, but as of yesterday, whether it's the scope creep, I don't know, yesterday at about 7:20-ish, the backhoe fired up, the beeping, the beeping just pierces, like it's like an alarm in my house, wakes me up, and then the banging of the front load, as he's moving, I guess, the debris around. And about 7:30, one of the Penn Waste Trucks come barreling down the back banging. I mean, when he bangs, it'll just ricochet inside, it's like taking a big drumstick and pounding on metal. And depending on how fast they go, it's louder, and evidently, there's bumps in the road back there. But that was at 7:30 yesterday. It was a green, looked like a big green dump truck. And so, anyway, there are some of the things that I deal with. And closing out, so when re-grinding the mosh, I think I mentioned, the dust levels are high, floats over to the house to furniture. Even despite my complaints, the township, I think I said, expanded the operation. I thought that was important. If we're still collecting yard waste from other agencies, we should be trying to reduce the hours of operation and how long it's in. So in closing, I just ask that the township continues to find ways to mitigate the excessive noise, reduce the dust, and possibly plant some type of evergreen trees along the road inside the landfill to create an additional barrier for the dust and the unsightly views, especially in the wintertime. At least I have the foliage right now on this side of the fence that helps in the summertime. And again, I thank you for your, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brad, you'll take that up with Mr. Nold? Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else under public comment?
Name is Gene Stilp, 1550 Fishery Creek Valley Road. I have a handout for the board. May I bring it up?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Can you?
I have a handout for the board. May I bring it up in one pager?
He has a handout.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. How you doing? Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. You weren't speaking in that mic there. I got it.
Thank you.
This is a request for permission to safely burn Trump flags at the township building. Request is for permission to burn a specific number of Trump flags in a property where the lower Paxton building is located. The flags will be burned are a combination of Trump flags on one side, a specific flag on the other side. Specific combination of flags are as follows. Combination of Trump flag, old Soviet flag joined together for Trump's unwavering support of murderous dictator Putin. Combination of Trump Confederate flag because of Trump's support of racism. Combination of Trump fascist flag because of Trump's support of fascism. Combination of Trump felon flag because Trump has been criminally convicted of 40, 34 felonies. And the Trump racist flag because Trump has been adjudged a rapist. The flags are to be safely burned in the galvanized trash can. There will be fire extinguisher material on hand for immediate use. There will be less than five participants. The galvanized lid will be on hand to help extinguish the fire. Please let me know the day and times that are convenient for the board. Nothing will interfere with the operation of the township building or township activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else under public comment? Okay, all right. With that said, we're going to move on. Do we have any board member comments?
I wanted to share with the public the information that I received from Representative Fleming on the property tax rent rebate program. Pennsylvania property tax rebate program benefits people who are 65 or older, widows and widowers 50 and/or older, and disabled people 18 or older. People who meet the age income requirements may receive a refund on their property tax or rent paid during the previous year. Income limits and rebate amounts have increased, starting with applications filed in 2024 for the 2023 program year. Eligible homeowners and renters can earn up to $1,000 rebate. Additional income limits will be adjusted annually to keep pace with inflation. I'm going to leave some of these brochures that I received from Representative Fleming at our roundtable the other day, over there on the sign-in table, and then I understand that we have some out in the lobby, correct, Brad?
I believe so, yes.
There should be some on the literature racks. There should be some on the literature rack in the lobby.
Okay, there's some on the literature rack in the lobby, and there will also be some at the Dolphin County Library on Ethel Street for people to pick up. And you can also go to Representative Fleming's office in Liberty Square to get some. And I understand that they are, that they have staff there who are willing to fill out the form for you. Okay?
Okay.
And I can just add, you can also go to the Department of Revenue's website, Pennsylvania Department of Revenue's website, and they have all the information there. And if you don't want to do paper, you can do it online, or just read the information if you can't get your hands on one of these.
I think it was last Thursday, Representative Fleming came into the township with Susquehanna Township Commissioners and Penbrook Borough Council members and the board, and we met with them for almost two hours about collaborating with each other, little bit of everything with the neighboring townships. So we were happy to be a part of that roundtable with our neighboring townships. Last Thursday morning, Supervisor Zumas and myself, we went into Wiccanisco Street, Dolphin County Technical School, which you all know is in our jurisdiction here in Lower Paxton Township. It took them three years, but they refurbished, rebuilt a burned-out house at 616 Wiccanisco Street, and it's through the Brother &amp; Homes. So we went in, we got invited to go in, so we did go in to see it last week. So they did a fantastic job. It was all the different shops that are out at Votech that rebuilt, rebuilt this house for a couple that were homeless and now have, now have a home. So, okay, anything else, Mr. Zumas, Mr. Judd? Nope, we're good. All righty, so managers report, Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I have one item this evening. The township's 2024 paving contractor, New Enterprise, will begin paving this Friday, the 7th, in the areas of Lakeview Heights, that would be roads such as Colleen Drive, Francis Drive, et cetera, and up in the Linglestown area, roads such as Wingfield Court, T Road, Adams Avenue in that area. In total, 15 streets will be paved. That comes to about 2.42 miles, and that equals approximately $1.15 million that the board had approved a contract to execute. To keep you all up to date and track paving progress, you can visit the township's website. We have a new web app called Pavement Pulse, and this is on our website. The Public Works Department will be updating this live, so you can track that paving progress as we progress. And so that is up live, and you can view that at your leisure. And that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, great. We try to, as the township, we try to pave 10 miles a year. As you can see, sometimes that doesn't happen because of the price of it. So little bit of $1.5 million doesn't pave a whole lot, so. Okay, no old business, new business. We have action to appoint Patricia Stahl to the Arts Council and appoint Shelley Esquivaria. Did I say it right? Am I close?
Echeverria.
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 Okay, H A Berea. So if I could just have you stand, Mrs. Stahl, would you like to stand, please? Okay?
I need to speak.
Well, because of time, we're not going to have anybody speak.
I need to withdraw this appointment because I now have a very serious medical condition that I was not aware of until 48 hours ago.
Okay.
And I am now under physician's care. I don't think it's fair to my township for you to appoint me to this appointment, so I regretfully decline.
Okay, well, we're very sorry, and you're in our prayers. Yeah, we're very sorry. So just keep praying that everything works out for you.
Thank you.
Okay, all righty. Okay, so then we'll just have action to approve Shelley Esquivaria. Yeah, we just wanted you to stand so that everybody on the TV can see you, so. Okay, do I have a motion to approve for the Arts Council for Shelley, please?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for volunteering, and Mrs. Stahl, thank you for volunteering, and hopefully, everything will work out, and I'm sure we'll have vacancies, we still have an extra one, too, in the future. But thank you for attending tonight, we appreciate it.
Shelley, we usually ask new appointees to sing Star Spaniel Banner or something like that. No? Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the action to approve and adopt amendments to the Historical Commission bylaws. Mr. Gutschall, are you handling that?
I can try to handle this, yes, ma'am. Before the board this evening is a relatively minor update to the Historical Commission bylaws. I think the last revision that the commission had brought forward was maybe three or four years ago. But this just adds a number of small tweaks to the bylaws, mainly to kind of clean up the meeting time and date language, and then also, it updates the quorum from four to five members. Other than that, no real substantive changes here, other than a few language tweaks. So I'd be happy to help answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve, hang on here a minute, action to approve and adopt amendments to the Historical Commission bylaws?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action to approve a sales agreement for the procurement of three Seagrave Marauder Pompers. Marauder Pompers. Mr. Graham, Mr. Miller, Mr. Gutschall, who's speaking tonight? Don't all jump at one time.
Yeah, of course, ma'am, as you can see, we have in the audience quite a contingent of public safety officials, fire, police, which we're happy to see. This is rather, of course, these are always difficult decisions by any governing body to make relative specifically to the cost of doing business in the fire industry. As you're intimately aware, these pieces of apparatus continue to climb in financing, but they'll be put to good use, of course. Director, Deputy Chief, do you have anything to add to this action this evening?
I'd just like to thank the board. I thought I would be loud enough, ma'am.
No, you're on TV, remember, they can't hear you.
I would just like to thank the board for taking action on this particular item. As we move through the fire study, we heard quite some time ago, this was a collaborative effort headed off by the Deputy Fire Chief and working directly with the three fire companies, and many, many hours put into this with the volunteers on the Engine Committee. And I think in the end, you're going to see just a wonderful product come out of this. Three of the same identical pieces of apparatus that can work interchangeably with drivers from various stations and firefighters. I think it's just a great move as we move into the future of fire and EMS in the township.
So as we see everybody sitting here tonight, everybody's in favor?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, all right, just making sure. And can you give us the price tag on the three of those? Maybe Brett would have to do that.
Yeah, it should also be noted to the board that this, we, the board has taken the rather appropriate action, through this action this evening, to pay for these three pumpers in cash, upfront 100%, which is going to save us a significant amount of money during the lifetime of these apparatus. So we thank the board for doing that. The total of this purchase this evening is, comes to the amount of $3,459,284.
The reason I ask, I didn't know if the residents at home, if that was up, or if Dr. Casiba was still on the television.
That's the top. That's the cost, Mr. Manager, before the discount, yes?
Before the discount. How much is the discount, Brad?
The payment after discount is $3,67,000, $3,67,864. So the math major in the room would have to tell me how much of a discount that would come to, but.
It's about $301,000. It's a little over 11% for a prepayment discount, so it was very substantial.
Right. $1.1 million each, about, so.
And in a perfect world, no resident will see this apparatus in front of their own.
Exactly.
There we go.
And then we'll be selling one of them, Director?
That's up for discussion on how we're going to move the apparatus around.
Okay, okay. All righty. Okay, any questions, board? Any questions from the public?
Thank you again.
Okay, all righty. So do I have an? So, do I have an action to approve a sales agreement for the procurement of the three pumpers, Seagrave pumpers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, guys. Okay. Action to adopt Resolution 2024-11, authorizing the subdivision of a funding request to the Commonwealth Financing Authority's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program. Looks like you, Mr. Gutshall?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the board, as part of the board's ambitious 2021 Parks Revitalization Project and resulting parks master plan, Lingle Park is next on the schedule for continued improvements following its new addition of a cricket pitch. Resolution 2024-11 authorizes the submission of a Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program grant application in the amount of $250,000 to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the installation of six new pickleball courts, a small pavilion, seating, an ADA connector path, a rain garden, and landscaping. The township through this application would be responsible for 15% local match, which comes to about $180,000, which we hope to offset through a county local share grant application, which the board will hear all about next week. But before the board this evening is Resolution 2024-11, and it is in order for the board to approve this evening.
Okay. For those of you watching, Lingle Park is situated behind Southside Elementary School off of Union Deposit Road. Do I have any questions from the board members, from Mr. Gutshall? Any from the public? Okay, can I have action to adopt Resolution 2024-11, authorizing the submission of a funding request to the Commonwealth Financing Authority's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have action to approve an amendment to the Friendship Center lease agreement with the Harrisburg Area Young Men's Christian Association, updating the lease premises calculations to include the East Annex, commonly referred to as the Friendship Senior Center. Mr. Gutshall, again?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, concluding a pilot program for the last number of months with the Harrisburg Y. The Y has been in discussions with the township for quite a while now to continue its partnership with the, with the township to include the, the senior center wing of the, of the Friendship Y. And for the last six months, they have been in a test phase to, to, to do just that, to essentially take ownership, if you will, of the senior center wing to provide to it, you know, custodial support, teardown support, that kind of IT support, that kind of stuff, just to determine whether or not it would be prudent for them, long-term financially, to, to take that ownership over. And they have concluded that that is feasible for them. And so, before the board this evening is a Y-executed agreement to, to update its existing lease agreement with the township to, to include the senior wing. And so, moving forward, again, the, the senior center, you know, operations and, you know, custodial support, IT, teardown, and rental will be considered by the Y. So, it's a great move. The Y, the senior center will continue to have a great space to, to meet and to continue doing what they do so well. And the Y will continue to have a, a strong partnership in the community with, with regard to the senior population.
Okay, so we'll be totally out of that? We won't be paying for the electric, the water, the sewer, totally? Okay, so a savings to the township. And the Y, if you haven't been there, you really need to go. The Y is doing a fantastic job over there. Fantastic. Do I have any questions for the board? From the board? From Mr. Gutshall?
Do we have an estimate on what the annual savings would be?
No.